Okay, seven o'clock, so I'll call them meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Today is May 2, 2022. Hi, Doring, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure, President Hu?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
President.
Commissioner Brandt?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
Here.
Commissioner Case Evans?
Present.
And Commissioner Watson. Thank you.
Thank you, Doring. Next item on the agenda is Communications. Commissioners, do you have anything you would like to share with the Commission? Well, I attended the volunteer appreciation lunch on April 23rd this past Saturday. It was a nice event. Mayor Snyder and Councilor Loop were there, as well as a few city staff members. So it was a nice event. Next thing is that the city and ODOTs are going to have a first walkthrough of Hall Boulevard on Wednesday, this Wednesday, May 4th, at 4:00 PM in front of Joanne's Fabric. So I believe the city and ODOT being in talk for two years to to have the city eventually take over the maintenance and control of Hall Boulevard. So this is the kickoff event, I guess, on Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And several speakers will be there, including Mayor Snyder and Representative, State Representative. So if you can make it, I encourage you to attend. And I believe the city was asked for public input on the necessary improvement they would like to see on Hall Boulevard before the city takes over. So keep an eye out for that comment solicitation. Okay, so consideration of minutes. So Doring has circulated a draft minutes from our April 18 minute meeting. So Commissioner, if you have any addition, deletion, or correction of the draft that you would like to share with the Commission, please raise your hand. All right, I see none, so I would declare the minutes from our April 18 meetings approved. Thank you. All right, so I will open the public hearing, our next item, which is a housing compliance project. And before I read the summary, I just want to remind the public that we will be seeking public comment for this public hearing. And the calling number for public testimony is 503-966-4101, 503-966-4101. And the application number is Development Code Amendment, DCA 2022-1, and Zoning Map Amendment, ZO-N 2022-1. The City of Tiger proposes legislative amendment to the Tiger Community Development Code, TCDC, and the zoning map. And most of the amendments will bring our city code into compliance with state requirement regarding middle housing. A couple amendments have to do with general housekeeping items. And amendment will consolidate the number of residential zone from eight to five. So I would like to bring our staff members, Senior Planner Skylar Warren, to present the staff report. So, good evening, Skylar.
Good evening, President Hu and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Skylar Warren, and I'm a senior planner in the Department of Community Development. And I'm going to share this presentation. And hopefully that is showing up for you. You have to tell me if it's not. The purpose of tonight's hearing, as President Hu said, is for a planning commission to consider a recommendation to the City Council on proposed text amendments to the Tiger Community Development Code and proposed map amendments to the Tiger zoning map. These amendments will bring the city into compliance with state law related to housing. So first, I want to provide a little bit of the background and history of Tiger's housing policy work. This provides some important context for the amendments that PC will be, Planning Commission will be considering. In 2017, the Oregon Legislative Assembly passed Senate Bill 1051. This was the first in a series of housing-related bills that changed the way that housing is provided for in our city and across the state. This bill required cities to legalize accessory dwelling units in all zones. And more importantly, the bill changed the definition of needed housing in state law to include all housing. While this might seem like a small change, it had a major impact on the way that we process and review housing development proposals. Because by state law, a city or county must apply only clear and objective standards to needed housing. The City of Tiger used that opportunity presented by Senate Bill 1051 to make housing policy updates in line with the adopted recommendation of the city's most recent housing needs analysis, which at that time was completed in 2013. The Phase 2 Housing Options Project included a number of changes, including the legalization of middle housing, like cottage clusters, the removal of language reflecting housing tenure from the code, and allowances for up to two ADUs accessory dwelling units per lot, with duplexes and triplexes folded into the definition of accessory dwelling units. Following quickly after Tiger's action, the Oregon Legislative Assembly again acted to expand housing opportunity across the state. House Bill 2001 legalized middle housing and required that cities of Tiger's size come into compliance within 30 months. At that time, the city was largely in compliance with the terms of the bill, but there were administrative rules to follow. While the state was working on those administrative rules, Tiger continued to move housing policy forward by adopting the city's first affordable housing plan. This set in place a roadmap for the creation of stable funding streams and a set of prioritized programs and policies. The administrative rules associated with HB 2001 were adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission in late 2021. While the city had been compliant with the bill, the rules were far more detailed and prescriptive in nature. And so city teammates set about auditing the code and working with staff at the Department of Land Conservation and Development to determine what, if any, changes would be needed. At that point, we believed the city would be able to avail itself of the alternative compliance process that was set out in the bill, given the early and significant work in forwarding housing policy. In April of 2021, we received word that alternative compliance would not be possible. And so we set out to scope a project to make necessary updates to the Community Development Code to meet the requirements of state law. While that work was occurring, the Legislative Assembly acted once again in the 2021 session, passing Senate Bill 458. This bill requires that the middle housing developments allowed under House Bill 2001 must be eligible for middle housing land divisions. These divisions, which are processed locally, create discrete units of land that can be transferred by deed, although the overall development in which those units are located must continue to comply with the middle housing development regulations in place. So that brings us to tonight's hearing on our work to bring the city's development code into compliance with state law and administrative rules. While on the whole, the city is already in compliance with broad provisions of HB 2001, we do need to make some updates. We also want to bring the city into compliance with provisions of Senate Bill 458 same time. And of course, as always, we learn from the implementation of the code over time, what works and what doesn't. And so we want to make some small changes that will improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the code and provide even more housing opportunity for Tiger's current and future residents. Thematically, this compliance project has three major components. The first is an update to the processes used to approve housing development. In general, we will need to approve middle housing developments without a land use process involved, where a development can meet clear and objective standards. In addition, we need to make some updates to our standards as they apply to certain middle housing types. And then finally, we are capping this work with a simplification and streamlining of our residential zones. Given the many changes in state law and the requirements that we allow middle housing in all zones at the same densities and with the same opportunity as is available to single detached houses, Tiger's eight residential zones have become more indistinct. So first, I'd like to provide a quick overview of what HB 2001 requires of us. I'm going to focus only on those things that apply to Tiger, so I'm not going to cover the things that we've already taken care of before HB 2001 was passed. Certainly, there's a lot of things that are included in HB 2001, but for a city like Tiger, where we've got the code in place for middle housing, the changes are less drastic than they would be otherwise. When we adopted middle housing reform, we focused on the compatibility of the different middle housing types in different zones. Row houses and quads were thus limited in where they could be located, with the lowest density zones being the most limited. We must now allow those types across all zones and at the same lot size or density of single detached houses. Some of our design and development standards were likewise out of sync with the prescriptive middle housing rules, but most of those changes were minor in nature. One of the bigger changes is a requirement that the city approve middle housing developments using the same process as is applied to single detached houses. And when we passed the original Housing Options Project in 2018, we applied a Type 1 ministerial land use review to most of those middle housing types. Under the state law, we cannot continue to do that, so we have to now apply the same process that applies to single detached houses, which means plan check. In addition, some of our parking requirements for quads were a little more restricted than they are allowed to be by state law. And then lastly, we had some lot standards that were out of compliance. For most middle housing, we can't apply a lot size or width standard that is more restrictive than is applied to single detached houses. So as I mentioned earlier, Senate Bill 458 requires that we provide a local process to divide a middle housing development into smaller units of land. This is a bit nuanced, though, as we are not required to treat these units of land as individual lots, except for the purposes of property transfer. We have to apply an expedited process to these divisions with a much shorter approval timeline of 63 days from a complete application. For comparison, the standard window for completing local review, including a local appeal, is 120 days by state law. So it's just over half of the amount of time. Only one dwelling unit is allowed per lot, and common areas must be placed in tracts or easements for common ownership and maintenance. And now I want to talk a little bit about the code improvement aspect of this project. While the, you know, major outcome of this work is to bring us into compliance with state law, as long as we're in these chapters and we're making amendments, we want to go ahead and make some fixes and clarify language where our experience tells us we should. Since 2018, we've had three cottage clusters approved in the city. And we have two that are currently under land use review. We've also had some developer interest in courtyard units and quads as well, but none have been approved or built to date. So based on what we've heard from prospective developers and our own team, we've created a short list of improvements that we believe will make the code work better for everyone. And generally, we're trying to clarify those standards. We're trying to make density calculations more straightforward and consistent. We're trying to increase the flexibility for any courtyard housing development, so that's cottage clusters and courtyard units. We want to eliminate some confusion around the accessory dwelling unit housing type and remove restrictions on waste collection. We want to have better purpose statements that help us to make adjustments more easily, and we want to simplify our approach to zoning. So now I want to talk about a change in one of our housing types. This gets to that accessory dwelling unit clarification that I was talking about in that last slide. This is one where we definitely learned from our implementation of the 2018 code changes. At that time, with accessory dwelling units being allowed everywhere, the code team arrived at a recommendation to do away with duplexes and triplexes as a housing type altogether and fold those into the accessory dwelling unit housing type. The thinking being that functionally, there's no real difference between a duplex, triplex, and an accessory dwelling unit, or two accessory dwelling units on a site. It's additional housing unit, it's additional, maybe a vehicle, it's additional square footage. But of course, it's still meeting setbacks and other development standards in the zone. So we thought that was a pretty straightforward and helpful change. What we found was that it created a lot of confusion for developers and sometimes even for their lenders, who didn't understand that what they were financing as a duplex was considered locally to be an accessory dwelling unit. And then, you know, that also made some confusion for accessory dwelling units because they could be interchangeable with duplexes, triplexes. And with the changes in state rules, they further created a divide, or they furthered the divide between accessory dwelling units and duplexes and triplexes as housing types, at least in terms of the specific rules that apply to them. Essentially, they're both supposed to be allowed everywhere, but by state law, we still have to treat them as separate housing types. So it didn't make sense to continue to have these set in different sections under accessory dwelling units. The new approach is to replace the single detached house chapter, that housing type, with a new housing type that's called small form residential. And in that housing type, we now include single detached houses, duplexes, triplexes, and attached accessory dwelling units. The reason for that is the development standards for all four of these are the same under state law. And the second is that now we can call it small form residential. If someone needs to call it a duplex, or a triplex, or an accessory dwelling unit for their lending purposes, that's fine. Those are all types that are included in the local small form residential development type. So with that, moving attached accessory dwelling units out of the accessory dwelling units chapter, now that chapter is focused exclusively on detached accessory dwelling units. So we can go back to implementing our 800 square foot limit that we have for those ADUs, without there being confusion about the 800 applies to detached and that there's no limit for attached. Now it's very clear, if you go through this chapter, it's 800 square feet. With quads, that chapter is going to keep the existing four-square configuration. The reason for that is that is the development form that is most compatible with existing neighborhoods because instead of stacking units behind, it really takes on the form of a single detached house. We removed the landscaping requirement that's required by state law for us to remove it. And we also reduced that parking requirement for quads. For row houses, we retained the grouping limitations of five, so in our zones that have larger lot sizes, we had a limit of groupings of five. And that's just to break up the row house development so that they don't become monolithic along the street, where you just have a continuous unbroken facade of row houses. So you can do them, you can do 20 row houses in a development, but they just have to be broken up into groups of five. And then we also removed the landscaping requirement, not allowed by state law, but also it just ultimately didn't end up making sense for row houses in the end because it had canopy requirements that are just hard to implement for this housing type. The cottage cluster and courtyard units chapters have had the most significant updates, and they are mostly related to the design standards for these more complex developments. So we've clarified some of the standards that apply to the courtyards themselves. We've clarified the parking requirements. We've provided better diagrams and figures to kind of illustrate what we're requiring. We've removed the waste collection requirements. We had a prohibition on dumpsters in these developments. And instead, we're focusing on service area screening to implement compatibility. And then we have to bring our clear and objective standards into alignment with state law. So as I mentioned, state law requires us to allow cottage clusters through a plan check process with no land use. Same process that would apply to a single detached house in the same zone. However, we understand very well that this housing type often needs more flexibility than is allowed through clear and objective standards to ensure that it meets compatibility goals and results in the best neighborhood design. So as such, we've created basically a split pathway for approval of cottage clusters. And an applicant can choose to go through Path 1. Those are those clear and objective standards. Go to the, straight to the plan check counter. Get through plan check, you go to building permit, but we do not allow adjustments to those standards. And that's the pathway that meets all the requirement, all the minimum requirements of state law. But we've also offered a second path, which is to use a Type 2 land use approval. That's still handled by, at the staff level, so does not come to a planning commission or any other body, except on appeal. And actually, in that case, it still only goes to hearings officer, it does not go to planning commission or city council. And that land use process allows staff some limited discretion. So that's particularly handy for applications where they want to do something novel with that courtyard, where before we only could apply clear and objective standards. Now we have a little bit more flexibility in the way that they arrange that courtyard. We have some more flexibility around the way the units are arranged. And we have some more flexibility in allowing them to do more than 12 units and do groupings of cottage clusters. So there'd be maybe more than one courtyard in one development. And then that process would be eligible for an adjustment. So the courtyard unit housing type, this one's a little weird because it's not actually covered by state law. This is a unique housing type that we have. And essentially functions as a type of attached cottage cluster, if you will. It still has most of the same standards related to courtyards and that kind of thing. But we also recognize that has a lot of things, you know, in common with cottage clusters. And so it makes sense to apply the same two-path process to that housing type, even though we're not required to allow that Path 1 under state law. So again, the same two-path process would apply to courtyard unit proposals as well. So again, the benefits of the split process, that clear and objective pathway meets those state requirements, but that discretionary pathway offers much greater flexibility around those courtyards, multi-courtyard configurations, garages and carports, increased square footages, and adjustments. So to recap, under state law, these are all the housing types that we now have to allow by right with no land use approval. Small form residential, so that includes single detached houses, duplexes, triplexes. We actually can put accessory dwelling units through a land use process, but it doesn't make sense in that context. Cottage clusters, using the clear and objective standards required by state law, no land use. Courtyard units, we don't, we're not required to allow that clear and objective pathway, but we're offering it. And then quads and row houses both also have to be allowed by right with no land use. So I'm now going to talk about some of the changes related to density and lot configurations. So there are a lot of reasons that we needed to rebuild our approach to these concepts. You know, state law requires that we now allow middle housing on lots that would allow single detached houses. So, you know, we used to have a minimum lot size for cottage cluster that was larger than a single detached house in the same zone. State law has done away with that. Now, the same lot that would have single detached house, you can put a cottage cluster on it. And so what we were doing before with the 2018 changes is we had a lot of different densities that were scattered throughout the code. They were in the development standards for these different housing types. And it was just generally pretty messy. I mean, it was, it was the best option that we had at the time. But, you know, definitely a lot harder to sort of understand where to find density requirements in the code, because you had to go to different places. The other thing that we're up against is that the entire concept of density is really just not meaningful anymore in a post HB 2001, post-middle housing world. Because HB 2001 says that we cannot apply a maximum density to those middle housing developments. So where we used to have a maximum number of cottages in a cottage cluster development, 12. There's no limit under state law, so really kind of the cap is off density. We also had an issue where a lot of our land division criteria were mixed with standards in those chapters. We had a lot of lot standards and density standards that were not clear in the land divisions, where they applied. And then there was just a lot of repeated language between all of those lot division chapters, lot line adjustments and lot modifications, land partitions, subdivisions. So there's just an opportunity for us to get out of sync with our language there, the more language is repeated through multiple chapters. So the solution to all of these issues is essentially to sort of reorganize that division of the code. So 18800, which used to be called land divisions, is now renamed as lot creation and modification. Makes a lot more sense because it did include lot consolidation and lot lot adjustments, which are not a land division. We have a new chapter, 18805, lot standards, that consolidates all of those density standards that were scattered throughout the code. And it applies them based on minimum and maximum lot sizes in the different zones. It consolidates lot standards that were repeated in other land division chapters, and then it separates the standards from criteria. So we put all the standards in the lot standards chapter, and then the land division chapters, now they just have criteria. So that had the result of making that partition subdivision and lot modification chapters much more simple. We're focused on the criteria and the process, not the standards. Although there's definitely more cleanup to come in a future project, this is definitely something that's on our radar. But as an interim solution, we've made an incremental improvement to things, and that project will continue to improve on this. And then lastly, we have a new chapter, 18840, sublot plats, that implements those requirements of Senate Bill 458 to allow those middle housing land divisions. And it uses an approach that's modeled on condominium plats for common areas. So in other words, they're under joint ownership, and they're commonly maintained by the homeowners association. So I'm going to talk a little bit right now about that zoning. Right now, this is a map that shows our current zoning. The color is a little different than what we use because we want to we really want to distinguish between these different residential zones. And typically, we just apply like different shades of yellow. So that's why the color coding looks a little different here. And then this chart shows how those different zones would be merged. So the R1 and R2 zones, the yellow zones that are shown here, they are incredibly small comparatively in the city, 32 acres and 55 acres. The proposal is to combine those into a res A zone. The R3.5 and R4.5 zones, you know, the 3.5 zone is much, much smaller compared to 4.5, and though they have very similar standards, so we're proposing to merge those. We would not do anything different with the R7 and R12 zones. And then the R40 zone, which there's actually only And then the R40 zone, which there's actually only one property in the entire city that is zone R40. We would fold that into the R25 zone under the zone designation res E. So this is what that updated zoning map looks like, much more simple, much more straightforward. And of course, it makes all of the charts, all of the tables that we use to provide standards throughout the code much simpler and it makes them a lot less wide, which makes it easier to actually display them on a screen or on paper. So just generally easier also to navigate between the different lot size standards in the zones. We've got some small amount of omnibus changes included. You know, most of it's renumbering based on some of the changes that you've seen. We've got some terminology updates, some small fixes to definitions and measurements. We removed the unused setback averaging approach that's in the measurements chapter. We fixed an ambiguous entrance standard in the tiger triangle. And again, just to, there's also some changes to the municipal code in here. I think officially the planning commission does not have to weigh in on those, but I mean, they're included in here for you to see those changes as well, because they, they are referring to portions of the development code. So what's next after these changes? Moving forward, we've got some more work to do to fully implement the code changes and map amendments. We need to resolve some questions around frontage improvements and dedications related to this plan check approvals for middle housing. We need to update our intake and review procedures for plan check housing to make it as easy as we can for staff and applicants. We need to change our intake forms, revise our fee schedule slightly to incorporate the sub lot plat application type. Obviously, we need to update the city website and the information, public facing information. And then we have some GIS work to do and printing company maps. So with that, I'm finished with the presentation on these proposed text and map amendments. And I will take any questions before your deliberations.
Thank you, Skylar. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Skylar? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Brand, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hey Skylar, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. This doesn't seem like an easy lift, a lot of work here. I have a question. I have been trying to find a definition of all the different zoning codes. So like, what does res A mean? What does res B, what's M U R one? And I have not been able to find anything anywhere to give me a list of what they all mean. Does that document exist?
Yes, it is in our development code. So the 18100 division of the development code, title 18, includes the base zones for residential, commercial, industrial and parks and recreation. And actually parks and recreation is still, I think, just a, it might be a placeholder, I can't remember. But those are all listed there. And the commercial zone, 18120, would be the one that would have the like descriptions of those mixed use zones. So that MUC zone, mixed use commercial one, that would be described in there. The residential zones, we do not provide descriptions of them. And that's not a change in policy, it's always been that way. The res A through res E designations are no more sort of nondescriptive than what we had before the R1, R2, R3.5, R4.5. Ostensibly, there was like a very rough correlation to units per acre originally with those. It didn't actually match up exactly. And of course, when we did the 2018 changes, it didn't match up at all because there were all kinds of different densities per zone. So those, those res A through res E zones, those are just different ways of thinking about the sort of lot size standards for those zones. And I could tell you, well, this zone is, you know, this lot size, but it's not as straightforward as even saying that. Because it just depends on the housing type under state law. You could think in, under the old scheme, like when we thought about density in a very different way. Res A would have been our lowest density zone and res E would have been our highest density zone. If that's helpful.
Okay, because I've been poking around in the Tiger Municipal Code, Title 18. And like you said, it was obviously still using the R1, et cetera. But what I didn't understand is I can't figure out, like if I wanted to build a piece of land, I have no idea what R3.5 means, or R12, or R7. And I spent a couple hours scouring the internet using four or five different search engines. And I still couldn't tell somebody, yeah, an R2 means this and R3 means that or R4.5. So that's the really frustrating part about it. Is that there's no way, and I look at other states like Ohio. Cause anything with O comes, you know, Ohio always comes up and they have this means this and this many houses, this must this, this type of stuff. So they all define what you can do in an R1 zone or whatever they use. Same with Pennsylvania, Nevada, Texas, something like that. Well, Texas is you do whatever you want basically, but other states would just tell you exactly what it is in the zones. And so that's what I've been frustrated with, I don't know what it means. Because I drive around and I look at a neighborhood and I have no idea what kind of neighborhood this might be. And if I pull out a zoning map, I'm like, well, it doesn't, that doesn't tell me anything. So that's my frustration.
Sure, I understand that. And you know, I will say that the state of Oregon has a much different land use framework than Pennsylvania, Ohio, Texas, certainly. And the reality is those jurisdictions are just not faced with a requirement to allow all kinds of different housing types in all zones. And so, you know, they're really operating under the old paradigm of, you know, this zone means, you know, a minimum density of this and a maximum density of that. So the best way to get an understanding of kind of what those, what's allowed in those zones would be to visit that new lot standards chapter, 18805. And then look through the res A through res E columns. And it'll show you for each of the housing types, you know, what those, what the standards are. And unfortunately.
Number again, Tyler, Skylar?
18805.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have more question, Commissioner Brand?
I do, but if someone else wants to answer a question, ask a question first, I see JR, not sure who that is, but they got their hands up.
Okay, so Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Partially question, partially maybe an answer. I think this is moving us towards that rationale of nomenclature. That is this, the way I'm seeing this, I was asking if this is a correct perception. Is over the last zillion years, we have added piece by piece based upon the need that arose at the time. And came up with zoning names and sizes and rules that have just accreted. And now what you're doing, I think, is just taking a systemic approach of looking at the entire thing and saying, let's rerationalize it. And make it easier to understand. Is that what's happening? It's, I mean, it looks like a wholesale change for the better, I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially it. We're, we're really just trying to streamline more than anything, just to make it easier. The numbering system, the R1, R2, R3.5 always caused confusion. Because it's assumed when you have numbers that they correlate to some sort of numerical standard. Which is why we went with the more generic alphabetical designations. And then you're correct, you know, when we set about to zone Tigard and any place else, really, starting in the twenties. But for us, really in the mid sixties and into the seventies. You know, there was, you know, just a very much an exclusionary zoning approach to things. You know, this goes here and it fits on this size lot at this density. And this goes here and it fits on this size lot at this density. That's all gone. And one of the challenges for us in the planning world is that as, as a, as a body, our profession, our field and the regulatory framework that applies to it at the state level has moved on from the concept of density. We're in a post-density world and yet there are still these remnants of that old system that kind of rear their head and cause confusion. So I'm not going to say that this is the final, you know, change that we will need to make in the coming years. But is again, an incremental improvement that will continue to, to build on. That will help us make our, our code more housing type neutral and applicant friendly.
Exactly, you're reframing the broad level and then that, like you say, applicant friendly. Cool, thank you very much.
I'm going to pop in just with one more, so we, not to beat this, this horse. But I think it's helpful, again, with the history as Skylar described. You know, when zoning started in the twenties, there were three zones, residential, commercial and industrial. And then it got more sophisticated from there. But the residential zones were broken up all based on either density or lot size. And I'll give you an example, Tigard's zones, like Washington counties, were essentially started out loosely correlated to density. So R7 was roughly seven units an acre. So, but city of Portland, their zones correlate to lot size. So R5 means 5,000 square foot lot minimum, R7 means 7,000 square foot minimum. So you have two jurisdictions that are right next to each other. And the R1 through the higher numbers goes one direction and the R1 through the other ones goes the opposite direction in the city of Portland. So in Tigard, the quote high density zones are the low numbers. And the low density zones are the high numbers. And in Portland, it's the opposite. Then throw in the last 10 or 15 years of middle housing, all kinds of changes, ADUs. Essentially, we've gotten rid of all of that stuff on which those designations were based on. And so we, the team, just looked at that and said, okay, you know, we can't come up with a number or a name that's going to particularly match exactly everything that's going on in these zones, because they're just too complicated. So in order to simplify it, we just simply went residential A through E, A through E. And then if you want to know what's going on in there, you got to dig into the code and look in that use table or that standards table to see what variety of housing types you can do in there and what the, you know, the standard limitations are on setbacks and so forth. So hopefully that's helpful.
Commissioner Brand, would you like to ask more questions before I move on to other people?
Let Nathan answer.
Okay.
Then I'll ask one after.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
Well, I was actually going to say that I think we're, we're pushing beyond our, our listed call in time. So I was going to save my questions for after public testimony. But I'm happy to ask him now if that works better.
Kealan, do we have any caller waiting?
There are no callers at this time.
All right, here you go. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
So I have two kind of change, two questions on some of the specific changes and then kind of a more general process question. The first one is from the apartments chapter. Let me see here. Under accessory structures, it changed so that certain materials were allowed on accessory structures that aren't within 20 feet of the street property line that didn't used to be allowed. And I was just curious what, what, if anything, motivated that change.
So that, that was the change that was requested by the code team. And I believe that the idea there is that those materials are most incompatible where they are adjacent to the street or within a certain sightline distance of the street. And for many of these apartments where, you know, the development itself could be rather large. It didn't make sense to limit the materials that they could place on accessory structures that might be completely hidden from view on the street. And I think that change also is focused on the plain concrete block. I think that link, that chapter also included that update.
Yes, I think it did, thanks. The other kind of specific question was related to, I believe it's a change in how distances are defined in 18 dot 40 dot 030. Talks about, I'm not exactly sure what the old definition is, to be honest. But the, the definition is distance between a transit line and a property is the sort of straight line from the property line to the edge of the nearest right of way where the transit service is. And I was just, I assume that's kind of a standard definition. But my, my, the way my brain works is when I hear a rule, I think, okay, what, what would break that rule? Or what would make that rule not work well? And I was thinking, okay, if someone lives at the top of a cliff and at the bottom of a cliff, there's a bus stop. Are they technically within 50 feet of transit line, even though it would take them hours to get there?
It's an astute observation and yes, by the, the way the code's written, that would apply. A little bit of history on that measurement, we didn't actually have that measurement in chapter 1840 before. Although we reference distance to transit lines in the middle housing chapters as one of the ways that you could reduce parking requirements for those housing types. This same conversation came up when we actually went through city council adoption of the middle housing changes. And we clarified at that time, basically what's reflected in this definition, but we've never memorialized it in the code. So now we're memorializing in the code. To the other part of your question, which is more about the, it, does that make sense? What we, the goal here is to make the standard as readily applicable as possible in a plan check process with minimal technical input and minimal technical review. Because the planner on duty, he's going to be taking in these plan check housing developments. They're not going to be able to do a really complex calculation. This is an area of some sort of experience for me. I spent a large part of my graduate, my time in graduate school, hand mapping routes, walking routes and bicycle routes based on network, not based on straight line distance. And certainly there's a lot of difference when you're calculating those things. And we have tools that can help us with that, GIS, that kind of thing. But the thing is, like, even those models are not great. So for instance, that model might tell you that, you know, hey, you can move, you know, you move down this road and that, and then you just take a right here. Well, that, that model might be based on vehicle movement. But if you're on the other side of the street and there's no safe intersection there, you actually can't make that turning movement. And so you get into a level of nuance in, in really calculating those network distances. That's just not, we're just not ready for that level of detail. Someday we might be at that plan check process. So that's the thinking behind this, it's just meant to be a straightforward standard. It's not going to be perfect. Luckily, we don't have a ton of cliffs in Tigard, but we do have a lot of dead ends. So I mean, that, that is something that will come into play.
Just to follow up to that, takes a little more explanation. One of our rules of thumb is when we're writing code, we try to write 80%, 90% code. Which means we try to cover 80% of the situations we're likely to run into. Because just the nature of code, it's so complex, you're never going to be able to write a piece of code that covers 100% of the situations. And then in this particular case, we have the clear and objective requirement by the state. And, uh, they are dead serious about clear and objective. It does not allow our staff planners to exercise any discretion, zero discretion. And there's a whole bunch of recent case law at Luba where some of our neighboring jurisdictions have been handed decisions back to them saying, this standard is not clear and objective. And some of those standards look pretty clear and objective to me, but Luba said, no. So it's just really, really tying us down to making, you know, those kinds of decisions. And so that's where you get to, um, situations like that, when it has to be just absolutely black and white. So hope that's helpful.
Yes, thanks. That's very helpful. Um, and actually, that leads into my final question. Part of what we received was the, the written comments from DLCD and then Tigard's responses to those comments. And it seemed like on some of the points, Tigard and DLCD just didn't agree on the interpretation of the code. And I was just curious what that, what that means going forward as far as process, you know? If, if these changes were to be adopted in DLCD or anyone at the state still said, no, that's not good enough, then what happens?
It's a great process question. Ultimately, um, you know, DLCD will acknowledge the changes that are adopted. And unfortunately, as Tom kind of alluded to in his last response there, ultimately, you know, DLCD is not going to weigh in on this. If someone wants to challenge it, uh, you know, we could write what we think are the best clear and objective standards that we're in agreement with DLCD on all of them. And we still might end up being remanded or, or even overturned on appeal. So they are providing us with their sort of best guidance. And in any situations where we didn't like, agree, we did agree that there is a process under their guidance that allows us to make findings that, um, the standards that we're implementing do not cause unreasonable cost and delay. And that essentially, I'm not going to say that it protects us because again, we don't know until someone challenges on us on it. But we believe we have a really strong case that the standards. And we're, we're just off on a few things related to the courtyard. I don't think there's any doubt that we would have a really strong case that there's no unreasonable cost and delay when we've already approved three cottage clusters in the last three years with those standards in place. And that those standards themselves did not prove difficult for those developments to meet. The last item where there was not, you know, there's just some uncertainty is that Senate Bill 458 piece. And DLCD has basically said that they're not offering rules for that. They're not offering really guidance for that. And they've said, you know, to us that they expect that ultimately the courts will sort this out. We of course, hope that Tigard is not the test case for that, but we can never guarantee that. And I wouldn't sit here tonight and guarantee you that, that we wouldn't be the test case. But we do feel like we've built a solid enough, um, reasoning that if we were challenged, that we would have a reasonable chance of prevailing. And we're not alone. Every other jurisdiction that is implementing the Senate Gold 458 provisions is headed into the same sort of unknown.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Brand, please continue.
Thank you. Uh, so while we're talking about cottage clusters, what's, what's the hang-up with the rectangular courtyard? Why is there so much like, I mean, so many pages dedicated to talking about the shape of the courtyard?
Yeah, so that, uh, as, as Tom said earlier, we have to have clear and objective standards in place. So this, this dates back to when we adopted the 2018 Housing Options Project because we wanted clear and objective standards at that point as well. We were challenged with, how do you come up with a clear and objective way to measure a courtyard? Because a developer could come in and say, this is my courtyard. And it just consists of a bunch of, uh, walkways between units. And there's not really any, like, courtyard activity that can happen there. And it's not really an open space that can be shared. So what we decided is, we don't care what shape your courtyard is, we don't care what it includes, but here's the shape, it's a rectangle, it has minimum dimensions. And you have to fit this into your courtyard. So we're not requiring that the courtyard itself is rectangular. But it's like, uh, those old, uh, you know, toys that kids had where you have to fit the different shapes in the, the holes or whatever. You know, you just have to show us you can fit a rectangle of these dimensions into whatever you're calling your courtyard and then you, you pass the standard. And again, we don't want to get into a debate at a plan check process at the counter about what is and what isn't a courtyard with, uh, an applicant. We want to be able to see, okay, here's your rectangle, we pull out the ruler and we can measure it. It meets the standards, you're good to go, you're, you're on the building permits. So that's what that's all about.
So this is more about aesthetics. Make sure that we're not jamming people in till they don't have proper access, especially maybe EMS or other issues. If you've got everything jammed together, you can't get in there. If there's a fire or something like that, or egress, it's okay. So that's kind of the idea?
Correct, yeah.
I, I figured that, but it wasn't, I just, I couldn't figure out why there were so many pages dedicated to it.
Well, I, I would say it's a little more than that. Anytime, so anytime you want to have any influence on, on design and you have to do that through clear and objective standards, it gets very, very tricky. Because design is such a subjective issue. So whenever you want to have any sort of design influence, it ends up, like, the courtyard's taking several pages of really narrowing down and locking in that design elements that you really want. So with the courtyard, not only, as you described, do we not want them jamming units together and sort of messing up the courtyard, but we wanted it to be attached to the street, open to the street. You know, we wanted the units to be facing into the courtyard because it's a cottage cluster. So the whole idea of a cottage cluster is you have the cottages that are, you know, basically in a nice community way around a courtyard. And you want the courtyard to be nice and you want that whole thing to be open to the street. Or we do, City of Tigard, have that connection to the street so that there's a courtyard for the cottage cluster, but it's also has a public face. And so it's not just turning its back with a whole bunch of cottages, the backs of cottages to the street. So to incorporate those particular design elements that we didn't want to give up, uh, it takes several pages to nail that down.
I guess I'll ask another question. Um, Shulua, you mentioned, um, that the kind of backing off on the, every unit has to have its own garbage can. Is that potentially opening up to this single-family neighborhood, to the cul-de-sac I live on? Being able to get a dumpster service for everybody instead of having individual cans?
You know, that's probably a question that's beyond the development code to answer. You know, we like, essentially, we're just getting out of the business. We, we were trying to regulate that specifically for those middle housing types for compatibility purpose, purposes. What we found is that, um, when you've got 12 units and they've each got garbage, recycling, compost, maybe, that's three cans per unit. 12 units, that's 36 cans that are out by the curbside. What's more disruptive to the livability of the neighborhood? A truck coming in and dumping three, like, mid-sized dumpsters and being done with it? Or sitting there dumping 12 cans one after the other? So we realized that while the, the goals that we had were laudable, you know, it just didn't make sense in implementation. So that's one of those things that, you know, we weren't required to remove that prohibition, but it just, it didn't make a lot of sense. To the specifics of your question, you know, that, I think that gets into sort of the municipal code and franchise agreements with, uh, waste haulers. And I wouldn't even dare to venture into that realm because it's its own complex thing.
Any more questions, Commissioner Brand?
Sure, I have a, um, just out of curiosity, the row houses, clusters of five, where does that come from?
Sorry, I was on mute there. It's in some sense an arbitrary number, but it's one that existed in the code before. We had a, a limitation on five units. So I don't know the entire legislative history on that. But, you know, as Tom said, when we're looking at design, you know, here's a very easy numerical standard that we can provide that gets to, uh, that design goal that I spoke of, of preventing a wall of row houses just in the neighborhood. You have five and then you break it up and you have an accessway or pedestrian access, that kind of thing. You have minimum separation and then you can put another five units. But we just don't want a monolithic facade that stretches, you know, 300 feet down a block face. Because, uh, especially with row houses with them being proximate to the street. I mean, that's just not in scale with typical residential development in most neighborhoods.
So that has, that makes more sense in an infill project. If someone decides to take out demo their single-family house and then put in, and they have a long block face and put in a ton, that would really, could upset the neighbors in terms of it doesn't fit. But if they have a smaller group of them, that might be more conducive to fitting in there because it is, it's not such a big footprint, so to speak. And then also, that means people have to walk all the way around and they're more likely to maybe not be as social that way because it's, there's no way to get to the back or something like that.
Certainly. And that restriction, that, that grouping of five restriction only is in place for the res A and res B zones, if my memory is serving me right, I don't have the table in front of me. So in those, uh, other zones, like the mixed-use zones and that kind of thing, you can still do, you know, row house development that does take up an entire block face. But that's a more, those zones are in what we would consider the sort of more urbanizing areas around, um, our 2040 centers, our, our metro 2040 centers where there's transit and commercial uses and that kind of thing. So much more compatible with that type of development.
Well, ask one more. So I was looking through the list of, um, uses and I saw two that kind of made me, I wanted to touch base with office. And eating and drinking establishments are prohibited in all the res zones. And I was just curious as to some, um, thought of why that is way we want to have our cities. Because this is the problem we have already is there's nowhere to go. Like, if we want to go to get food, a lot of us have to drive somewhere and we could walk. But it's just so much, it's so simple now in America, just get in your car and go somewhere. And so, and now with 20% or so of companies saying they're probably not going to make everybody come back to the office. So I was curious, does office mean any kind of office? Or does that mean like a specific, like you said, like a, you put a shingle out there that says, Joe's Consultant Service? And then is that what you mean? Or I was curious about those two.
So there's, there's three things that I'll touch on here. First, Tom kind of alluded to the history of exclusionary zoning. It wasn't just exclusionary in the sense of high-density here, low-density here. It's exclusionary in the sense of, this is where commerce happens and this is where, uh, living happens, right? And if you see old neighborhoods in some cities pre-zoning, that distinction didn't exist. And you have commercial uses side by side with residential uses. Even what we would consider sort of more suburban neighborhood, uh, formats. The, in, in recent years, there's been, you know, more movement toward home occupations, allowing more, uh, home occupations to take place in neighborhoods. So hanging out that shingle that you're talking about, you know, I've got a consulting business or you've got, uh, you know, a house cleaning business or you've got, you cut hair or something like that. But it's still very limited in scope and limited in the number of customers that can come. The good news is that as we look forward, there is a project that Hope Pollard, one of my colleagues, will be briefing you on, if she hasn't briefed you yet. And will be working on in the coming months and over the course of at least the next year to bring some of those appropriate, uh, commercial uses into neighborhoods. And so we are looking to that, you know? And, and, you know, your point about people being at home and working from home more frequently is well-taken. And certainly those people need services and they need goods. And it's preferable that they get those without having to get in their car for every single trip. So that's something that we're looking forward to. It's of course, not something that we tackled in this project, which was much more limited in scope.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, I have two questions, Skylar. So on page five, uh, by the way, I think it would be helpful to have page numbers for the, uh, for the, for the city councils version. On top of page five, I'm talking about procedures for non-discretionary review. So it says approval of non-discretionary reviews that based on the information submitted. Is that just to emphasize that you really don't have, you have no discretion? It's, you can only make decision on the information provided? Is that, is that why it's there, that statement's there?
Yeah, this language, um, we did not have procedures outlined in our code for how we do plan check review. That is something that other cities have, Portland, for example. So some of this language is modeled on Portland's language, not all of it. We, we definitely took a heavy, you know, editing pen to it, uh, to make it work for us. But, um, you know, essentially what we're seeing here is that, you know, if we're going to approve a non-discretionary, if, if we're going to approve development through a non-discretionary review, we have to have complete information that allows us to send that information on. So that's part one of that, uh, that two-sentence, uh, criteria there. And then the second part says that if the information you provide us is incorrect, we do have the ability to revoke or void, claw back that permit that was issued essentially based on, on faulty information. So that's what that's getting at. Um, it's just saying, you know, applicant, you are responsible for providing us with all the information that we need to approve these through plan check. And two, that information has to be accurate or we reserve the right to pull back that permit.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but, um, part of me just think that's, it's too much information, but not enough information at once. But I don't know, I, I, I think that's easy enough. But, but just curious, so if, if you can only make decision based on information provided, submitted, how would you know the information is incorrect? How would you, how would you get that? How would you determine later on the information is incorrect if you're only making decision on information provided? So.
Usually we hear it from the neighbors.
Oh, okay.
And also from our building department, our building department is really good about, uh, watching setbacks. And they do notify us when things get through or when an applicant has been sent through and they start to move things around. They even check setbacks at the time of, you know, inspections when they're in the field. So they're really good about that and, and we rely on them. And then of course, yeah, as Tom said, neighbors as well. And I'm sure there's probably other.
But couldn't the applicant, as your example said, move something? The applicant could argue that when I apply for it, the information is correct at the time it's submitted. So I don't know, I just, I, I guess as you said, this is a, um, project in progress. So if, if we can try and if, if you see some potential issue or not working in the future, we can always amend it, I guess. So I'm, but I'm just curious why that language is so simple, but it's in there at the same time. So. So that always makes me curious.
Yeah, well, your, your point is well taken, and maybe we should huddle up and look at this language one more time before it goes to city council and just make sure that it's communicating what we wanted to communicate. I mean, yes, we can always improve the code, but we want to put code out there that is the best it can be. And so, yeah, we will, we will definitely look at this again and just make sure that it's getting at what we need it to get at.
Yeah, as Tom said, if it applies to 80% of this, of the situation, it's good enough, I guess. So, and another thing, we, we exchanged a couple of email about the term small form residential. And I, I, I explained why I'm not too happy about it. And I understand your responses that you would like to keep the term starting with S, so you don't have to move things around, and you like the, the initial SFR. So, but, but I'm just wondering why, like, like explained, when all other housing type, like, you know, apartment and, and, and row houses, I can, they are all nouns, but residential is an adjective. So it just, so why, why, so my question is, how did you come up with the term residential instead of residence? For example, so, so, yeah, I, I didn't ask you for that question, ask you that question, I guess. So how do you come up with the term residential instead of a noun?
Right, so that's a great question. So I will, I will, this is not the reason, but I will reference back to the old SFR. And part of the reason that we liked the SFR abbreviation, as it's familiar to people in the development world, that was single-family residential, right? Which, again, that, that's just a house, it's a single detached house. And in that case, it's, I guess, also being used as noun. But that's, that's not the reason that we did this. The reason why this one is framed a little differently is because all those other housing types are a housing type unto themselves. Whereas small form residential is a collection of these various housing types that all have the same standards under state law, or, or at least very similar standards, and they're grouped together. So, you know, maybe the purpose statement could be expanded on a little bit to make that a little bit more clear. But small form residential is inclusive of single detached houses, duplexes, triplexes, and those attached accessory dwelling units. So it's, it's not, it's not a housing type, it's a, it's, you can almost think of it as a housing type grouping. Maybe that's not the most satisfactory answer to you, but it's the, the answer that I have for you.
Okay. Yeah, just as I explained to you, I, I can say I live in an apartment, but if I say I live in a residential, it just sounds weird. But anyway, I don't want to make this into a branding exercise, but I, 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 I just don't know if other planning commissioners have any issue and thought on that as well. But that, that's fine. So that's all the question I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any more question for Skylar at this point? No, so Kealan, do we have anybody on the line still, or no?
Still no callers in the queue.
Okay, so, so I will skip on the public testimony section. So, all right, so commissioners, any further discussion among ourselves? Or you have a motion, anybody have a motion for a recommendation to the city council? Or you, you have any comments you would like to share? Please go ahead. Commissioner Brandt, you, you raise your hand first. So any comments or anything?
Yeah, I was wondering, is it, would it be possible or proper to get a list in this document that has what all the different residential types are and approximate definition or idea of, so that people going forward, people can look at it and kind of understand how things are being reworked? If that becomes a legal nightmare, I totally understand.
I think that's for either Skylar or Tom.
I, I'm not sure I followed exactly what the request was for the housing types, like a list of the housing types.
Yeah, like we have res A, B, C, et cetera, CPC, and we have all these different acronyms. Would it be possible to have a page in there that has a table that kind of lists them? The commercial, I mean, the residential, commercial, industrial. So, and then brief description of what they're kind of supposed to be around? So that going forward, there is a easier way for people to figure out what these things mean?
Yeah, so I think, I think we generally have simplified things. We like, we've provided a much easier pathway to getting to those standards. And so, you know, instead of visiting six chapters to understand what's allowed in any given zone in terms of housing type, you now have three chapters to visit, which would be 18100, your base zones, your use standards table in the commercials or residential zone standards table, and then there's lot standards, if you're creating a lot. So that's, you know, we've cut essentially probably in half. And I think all of those things are well-defined, either in the 18100 chapter or in the definitions themselves.
I guess I do, I need to follow up clarification about what you're asking. Are you asking to have that put somewhere in the development code? And I, I'm not sure where that would be, because the code is broken up into, you know, the different sections of residential or commercial or industrial. And the other thing is, that's not, in our experience, that's not really how most people access the information. Developers and consultants, they all know the system, they know what the zone's being. They know how to work through development code to find what they need and what they want. Homeowners, you know, they, they come in and they find out what their zone is, and that's all they care about. Show me what I can do in my zone. They don't care about all of the other zones. So it's also a factor of how people approach the code and are seeking information. If you're suggesting we have outside of the code, a a public-friendly, wouldn't be a cheat sheet, but a informational sheet that gives quick summary descriptions of what each of the zones is about. We can certainly do that, but I probably wouldn't recommend trying to do some sort of a summary that we're trying to put into the zoning code.
Okay, that's what I kind of meant, some publicly facing document that if someone looks at a map or goes to a planning commission meeting, or he overhears something and doesn't know what that is, like, then they run into the frustration I ran in spending several hours and not getting any definitions, and just getting more and more frustrated and more distracted by other things they found. So I, when I went to the City of Tigers website, first place, I typed in zoning codes, and all kinds of legal language came up, but no, like, list of what the zones are, no math came up, nothing of that came up. So I found lots of links to the different, you know, the, the different code sections. But when you get in there, there, there's nothing, there's nothing to tell you what, what the zones are. So, and so you have to do a little, I think, too much research. And I think we get the idea that we're writing this just for ourselves, as the planners and the, and the technicians. And we forget that sometimes the general public needs access to information too. And ultimately, I believe that's who we're here to serve, is the general public first, and then our individual groups and developers and, and et cetera. But we have, this is, if this is going to be public information, it needs to be a little bit clearer. That's my main concern.
Well, I understand your concern, and I would follow up with, if you're talking about the development code, really, the first order of business with a development code is it needs to be legally sound and defendable. And that doesn't always translate into public-friendly language, which is why we put the code in the development code, and we try to provide other handouts and things that we help, and things on the website and things that we help people with at the private counter and on the website. I evidently didn't find it, but there is a, we even did a video, YouTube video a while back, that's basically zoning 101, that kind of goes over what all those things are. I believe that's still on the website. So again, that's what I would suggest is, we need to keep the code pretty clean and pretty legal, but we can definitely do a lot of things with our handouts and public materials to get to, you know, meeting what your, your point is. So President Hu, I know you have other commissioners that you, that are, were going to comment, and you had specifically asked them a question. I put my hand up because I just wanted to ask Mr. Warren, is there? Vice President Jackson had provided a very detailed list of edits. And did all of that make it into the draft of the code the planning commission is considering? Or is there a list of some of those edits that they need to account for in their motion if they move to adopt, or I'm sorry, not adopt, but to recommend adoption to council?
The specific comments that both President Hu and Commissioner Jackson submitted are not included in the planning commission draft that they received. They have already been incorporated into the city council draft. I don't.
So I guess I would.
Specific motion, or?
Yeah, well, yeah, I would, just to keep it clean, I know this is legislative, but to keep it clean, I would just recommend if a commissioner is going to make a motion to move to accept the staff report and recommend, if they want to recommend, recommend to council adoption with the specific edits and code changes that were suggested by President Hu and Vice President Jackson in their emails. I probably don't need to get that detailed, but you get the gist of, of my point.
My, my edit, my suggest edit, all scrivener's arrow, so they're not substantive. But I'm not sure about Commissioner, Vice President Jackson's edit.
The, the vast majority, at least, are scrivener shares.
True, okay, true, but there was enough from Vice President Jackson that it wouldn't hurt.
Well, my dilemma, Tom, my dilemma, I know, my dilemma, Tom, is that neither I or any of the other commissioner has reviewed those revisions. So I don't know if we are, we feel comfortable adopting them.
Let me ask Vice President Jackson the question of, is, if he is comfortable with trusting the staff to make the, the edits to the next draft that would go to city council as scrivener's.
I am based on the responses that Skylar sent me earlier today.
Okay, never mind.
Since the scrivener's arrow, I don't think we need to make a specific reference to them. All right, so I believe Commissioner Robert raised your hand. Do you have any comments, Commissioner Robert?
No, I, wow, not at this point, I guess. I, I was going to chime in and say just a simple cheat sheet off the side, but not buried in the code, would be an appropriate place to put our key of what was and what will be, and left it at that. And, but should we, and I'm in favor. So do you want to pull the, the group here and see how we feel? Do we need to just go to a motion?
Um, let me just briefly go through other commissioners, see if they have any comments they want to, to make. Because, so, because the city council will read our minutes. So Commissioner Miranda, do you have any comments you want to make? You don't have to, but.
I do not. I felt comfortable with our, our briefing beforehand and find that it's just in more detail, it was expected and thankful for the changes. Thank you for your hard work.
All right, Commissioner Shook, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm good also with the discussion and everything that has happened. I guess of all the things that we've talked about, the, the idea of clawing back a permit that's been approved is the only one that causes me any kind of grief. Because as Commissioner Brandt has noted, you know, the, the, it's a complicated code. And so as an applicant, the applicant's going to come in thinking they understand it, and the city thinks they understand it. And it seems like if there's an accident in there or a mistake in there somewhere, somebody's gone forward with the project, you'd hate to pull it back. But again, that falls in your 80/20 rule that you measured, and probably not within the typical. So I'm good. Thank you very much.
Tom, do you, do you need to comment on that?
Yeah, I just, to comment on that, essentially what we've done is taken the process that we are doing right now and have done for many years, and we've just put it into words. The plan check process has never been written down in the code. So we felt like, at this point, given where state law is going, we just needed to codify what we're already doing. So if somebody gave us bad information, or, and it's happened, or has tried to, you know, hide something, or they've given us a setback that, you know, that doesn't match what's out on the site and the building inspector finds that, we have the right to revoke the permit. But what we usually do is work with them to make a satisfactory change so that they can continue with their project. So I don't, yeah, I don't want to make this sound like this is a new, scary new thing that we're doing. This is just putting it to words in the code, our current practice.
That's a great clarification. Thank you, and that's perfectly reasonable.
All right, so Commissioner K. Seven, any comments?
No, I'm good. I really appreciate all the hard work Skylar and this team have put in. It's a lot of detailed work and excellent job there. And I also want to give a big shout out to Vice President Jackson. He has this tenacity to find the smallest thing in a large document, which I, I don't know how he does it, but great job there, Vice President.
Vice President Jackson, any comments?
Well, I would probably classify it as a, a minor form of insanity, but thank you for the, I appreciate your appreciation.
You're an attorney, right?
Uh, no, I, I test software, so I look, I look for problems.
Even more detail. Awesome. Cool. Should we do a motion?
Um, yeah, I just, before that, let me just thank Skylar and his team for this hard work. And as Commissioner Brandt stated, this is a major project, so it's a lot of work into it. And I think this amendment shows that the Tiger code is already ahead of the curve, and the state is finally catching up. So I hope, hopefully, this code amendment will offer a greater flexibility to housing development and address, well, partially address our housing and affordability issues in the city. So, thank you. All right, so Commissioner Roberts, you seem eager to make a motion.
This is exciting, actually. So I move that the planning commission accept the amendments and forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Sorry, I don't, we're not doing amendment. Oh, you mean the amendment made by the, okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I move the planning commission accept these amendments to the development code and the zoning map and forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the applications DCA 2022-00001
Two zero two two dash zero 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 one and Z O N two zero two two dash zero 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 one. And adoption of those findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report. And based upon the testimony we received today. And to include those written comments and scrivener's errors that were corrected. And submitted by President Hu and Vice President Jackson.
Thank you. If you don't mind me shortening it a little bit.
Go for it.
Just, just for clarification purposes. So Commissioner Robert moved the planning commission. To forward a recommendation approval to city council of application DCA twenty twenty two dash one. Zero and twenty twenty two dash one. And adoption of the finding and can, adoption of findings in the staff report. And that's it. There's no testimony, so.
Okay, so his back and forth today is not testimony. Questions and answers, the clarifications.
I, I can say based on the testimony received, how about that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so Doring, was that good?
Yes, that's very good.
Okay, thank you. It only matters if Doring can get a capture all in the minutes. So. Do we have a second? Commissioner Brand, do you have a second?
Yes, I'll second it. Thank you. I, I agree. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to adopt the DCA two zero two two dash one and. Zero and two zero two two dash one.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Please raise your hand. All right, so those in favor of the motion, please take a second to raise your virtual hand and keep it raised. Okay, okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, keep your hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So all seven commissioners voted yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now you can lower your hand and so I believe the city council is scheduled to hold their own hearing on June seventh. So you have any question about that hearing? Please contact the planning division. Thank you. Thank you, Skylar. All right, next item on the agenda is other business.
And I, I don't have any other, good evening commissioners, I didn't say good evening earlier, but. Good to see you all again. And I don't have any other business for tonight, so. I think we can call it a night and, and go home.
Great, so our next meetings in tentative meetings late July, right? Or the earliest is late July, so great, so we're going to have a long break, so. Great, thank you, everybody. Enjoy your summer.
Yes, congratulations. You powered through that. Easy period there.
Have a good night.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate the learning experience I'm getting here, so thank you for being patient and y'all have a good night.
Thank you for serving.